Okay, I'm here. Can you guys hear me? I'm. Morning, everybody. Welcome to staff meeting Tuesday, December 3rd. December 3rd is a big day here in Sedgwick County. It's Jim How's birthday. Yes, it is. Yeah, it's happy. It is. No, he told me not to sing. No proclamations, no singing. We did. We'll sing to him. He doesn't want us to sing, but it's Jim's birthday. We're glad he's here today. We have a couple of commissioners will be joining us on Zoom. I've got a full agenda for staff meeting. We're going to go a little out of order today. So Tanya, why don't you walk us through?
Okay, morning, Chairman and Commissioner. So we have three topics today. Topic one, Mary Beth Jarvis with Nexus will be here to talk about the entrepreneurship program. Second item is we want to talk about the large event policy. We've been around to see all commissioners and so we want to talk about the summary of that policy. And then the third item will be the legislative platform and we'll have Jason Watkins and Jessica Lucas here with Watkins Public Strategy to go through our platform. But I think we're going to go a little bit out of order this morning, if that's okay. We think large event policy shouldn't take too long. As we discussed, you've seen that policy. So if we can, maybe we can just kick that off first. Large event policy. So this is large events that will cover areas of Sedgwick County Park, Lake Athan Park and Coleman Parking Lot. Large event then meaning attendance of 500 or more. And I'm going to ask Armand if okay, ask Armand if he can come up and he is the author of this policy and just kind of summarize this again with some of the changes that commissioners as we discuss this asked to be edited on the policy.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ben.
Armand, your best. Honey data about such large event policies designed to address large events, Lake Athan, Sedgwick County Parks and Forest, Coleman Parking Lot. The large event policy is primarily designed to promote safety equality and streamline the application process so that there is a way to sort of deal with to look for certain things to require certain things. Specifically, there's going to be a requirement for the applicant to develop a safety and security plan or the public safety plan. This plan will address such things as the layout of the proposed area where the large event would occur. The beer garden, the number of security personnel, EMS, fire and contingencies. The medical coverage kind of goes into that as well. Medical coverage or addresses with that by EMS. Large large event policy also controls the location of the patient who comes over to his companion alcohol. Specifically that there's a clear distinction that the any large event that will have any
Oh, okay. That's I guess that's better. Now I have a mic. Cool. Any large events that will either sell or offer for sale or distribute any kind of alcoholic beverages that terms defined in the policy itself would be required to they would be required to get either the necessary permits or required to contract the caterer that would have all the necessary permits. They would also be required to address the beer and garden area that's for the safety plan and would also be required to address security measures that would be implemented to prevent individuals bringing their own alcoholic beverages into these events without basically basically bringing bringing stuff into these events that is not going to be otherwise secured by the safety plans. Moving forward, the application evaluation procedure, section seven, just talks about the application procedure, the deadline to file. The because of the scope, potential scope of large events, the deadline is no less than 180 days. Doesn't doesn't prevent individuals from filing a year in advance or the organizations from filing a year in advance, but it has to be at least 180 days that is there to get all of these stakeholders, the opportunity to review the applications, receive additional documentations if any, get recommendations from all of the stakeholders as to what appropriate safeguards have to be there or if there are any concerns about the scope, the size of the event, the purported activities and whatnot. The application review process basically outlines who reviews what and how. Ultimately, this would then go to Board of the County Commissioners for with recommendations of either approval or denial and the board will vote on that based on a quorum. If there's denial, there has to be specific grounds for denial. These are outlined in the denial section. Just like any other county out there, sometimes there might be need for some sort of limitations or conditions opposing a large event in order for the large event to be able to proceed. And there is a non-exclusive list of conditions that can be implemented by the Board of County Commissioners through the recommendations from the stakeholders. Due to the scope of large events, there's a section for indemnification agreement that's going to be incorporated into any kind of contractual agreement between the county and the operator of the large event that may arise out of this application for the large event. And there is also a section for revocation of approval. There are certain situations that may require revocation of the preliminary approval from the B O C C, whether it's something that as parties may find out later goes outside of the scope of the originally approved event, or whether there is some sort of calamity or an emergency in the county happening that may require triggering of a revocation of approval. But for certain types of revocation, there's an appeal process. So basically, the if I had to summarize this whole thing, it's there to make a streamlined process for all of the large events applicants that would go through this process. And by the time we get from point A to point X or whichever point it is, everyone knows what the large event entails, what are the expectations for the parties? So when we get to actual contract making, we already have all of these things ironed out. I'm here for any questions, but maybe there.
We'll open up for questions, but before we get to some questions, so the public's aware, Armon, what what policy exists currently today for large events in Sedgwick County? Is there a policy that exists now?
There is no formal policy to my my knowledge that exists currently.
So we're trying to bring some framework to this because no policy exists now. Okay, Mr. Chairman, questions. Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, Armon. Thank you for all the work that you've done on this. This is a needed policy. I don't know if it's going to be in the final format that will take place after we go through a couple of events. There may need to be some changes that we learn from it, but I think this is a good starting place that that we need in place before we start approving any kind of large events that are coming up in the future. So it's something that we need. And what we need to get it approved as soon as possible so that we can have something on the books if anyone comes up and asks for a large event. Again, this is a great place for us to start. As we learn more after several events, we may have to modify it a little bit, but I think this is the place that we can start well. Thank you.
Very good, Commissioner.
Commissioner How. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. Again, great job. Appreciate all your work on this. This this prohibits everything except all alcohol except for the two that are listed, the what we normally call strong beer, weak beer, the 3.2 and 6.0. That's all this allowed at these events in terms of alcohol. Is that correct?
That would be correct, yes.
All right. So if there's a wine tasting, something like that, that that cannot happen.
Not under this policy. And this will be in line with our current parks language in our codes.
Okay. This this only really applies to the the two parks, Sedgwick County Park, Lake Athan and Coleman Parking Lot.
That will be correct.
Okay. On page six, talks about the reviewing officer. If this was to happen today, help me understand today, who would that who were who would be the reviewing officer? If this was to happen at the moment, who would I expect to be that reviewing officer?
So at the moment, and this is based on my understanding of the codes as they're currently written. At the moment, because there's no formal policy for at least for parks, the application would be submitted with the County Parks Department and would be looked at by the park superintendent.
Park superintendent.
Yep, or or they're designing.
And then for the Coleman Parking Lot that goes through our department facilities. So it's the facilities director that looks at that.
Okay. And if it's not acceptable in their opinion, they're able to issue a a rejection to the application?
Yes, if currently if there is something that doesn't conform with the requirements of the application, they can deny the application.
And if they accept it, is that final?
If they accepted the application as the first step from there, the county legal would be engaged in drafting the agreement or the review in the draft of the agreement. And then ultimately, the signature authority would be either the county manager or the B O C C, depends on the scope of the of the event.
There's some large events that happened today, but I'm thinking about Sedgwick County Park especially. It's a lot of large events that happen out there in a year's time. They're going to have to get used to this new policy and this takes time to get this application, all the all the requirements that are going to be part of this policy. It'll take some time, number one, to make that application. And then it takes a number of how long before the event should they submit that for review?
Well, the reason the the policy currently says it's no less than 180 days and that is there for quick and tight turnaround, to be frank. It would allow a month for discussion about it, a month for review, and then they'll ultimately it'll give a couple of months for the parties to draft an agreement if there's an approval. Now, nothing prevents the applicant from submitting the application seven months, eight months, a year prior. Given that one of the grounds for potential denial might be because someone else already submitted an application for an event in the future. I think logically speaking is the sooner you submit the better your chances of getting that specific date range that you desire to get.
If we approve an application and there ends up being a scheduling conflict like that, do we end up with any type of liability?
If do you mean like you you would approve both applications?
We don't realize there's a conflict and we approve both and both of them are planning towards the same opportunity, if you will. And then do we end up with some type of liability because we are managing this managing those conflicts at this point, I guess, but through this through this policy, those conflicts are theoretically being managed, but say we fail to manage that well, do we have liability then?
I and the basically what B O C C would be issuing is a preliminary approval. You will not get contractual, like a contract out of it yet. The word it's worded is that you would get a preliminary approval that is subject to a revocation. So I would say that lie the liability would be minimal at that point. I can't say no liability whatsoever because liability is a fluent concept, but it would be on the low spectrum.
So let's talk about Lake Athan for just a minute. There's a lot of people out there that might be camping and have some type of tent or RV while they're camping, then they attend one of these events. How do you manage the the what exactly did you say at the beginning of your briefing about the be bring your own beverage or whatever that was you we talked about there? What happens if someone brings something that's not part of the beer garden sale? But it's how I mean, how are we? How is that going to be managed or controlled?
Certainly. So the the way that I would imagine the public safety plan would be handled by the fire and by the sheriff's office, because those are the two parties that primarily review the public, the public safety plan. Is that for large events, there's going to be an area where this designated large event can take place. If a person is bringing their own RV to stay at Lake Athan Park and they have an alcoholic beverage that they otherwise are allowed to bring to Lake Athan Park, they can nothing prevents them from consuming that alcoholic beverage at their RV or in the areas where they would otherwise be allowed to consume that is not the designated area for the large event. Now, the large event itself, that's where the organizer or the applicant, if that's the same party, would then be obligated to ensure that they have security measures, whether it's a guarded off area and there's some sort of face control or security control to make sure that the individuals who are going into the large event area don't bring their own alcoholic beverages with them.
They might be outside that area and have their own beverages they provided for themselves. That could still happen.
That can still happen.
It is our does our Kansas law address them? Is that considered public drinking or is there some type of prohibition for someone being basically on on those properties consuming alcohol that they provided for themselves? Is that what is what is the law? I guess local or state law say about that?
I would have to get back on that with you for a specific answer, Commissioner. I know that our local resolutions and our codes allow certain consumption at park areas. But as far as the state requirement, I would need to double check to get back on this. Because we're we're essentially it is a public area, but the the park would not be like would not necessarily be an equivalent of a street.
So someone, if we don't pass this, someone today set us quote, if someone wants to have a running event or forget what they call it now, but the medieval, what do they call that? Renaissance Festival or they have the dog events, the Wolfstock, you guys know all these names because probably Wolfstock or some other, you know, there's there's events like that that happen out there. How are they? How are they doing the organization of those events in coordination with the county today without this policy?
Certainly. So the way the current system works is that our current parks agreement for any kind of event includes language that would require the applicant and by the extent would impose the requirement on the applicant to enforce on the participant to adhere to all of these state laws and all of the requirements concerning in including the consumption of alcoholic beverages. There are specific provisions that basically requires them comply with state law and our application requires them to obtain all of the necessary either alcoholic beverage sales license or permit or get into a contract with a caterer to provide these services.
They would have to do that in our existing state law today, whether this policy passes or not. That's existing law. They have to comply with that already.
Under the existing state law, there only certain individuals can sell alcohol or and by individuals, I mean not either a person or an entity that can sell alcohol outside of like a designated store. Those are from the top of my head are caterers, but then there's also a limitation of what they can sell.
I guess my question is, how do they reserve the space? I mean, say I want to take over Sedgwick County Park with say the Renaissance Festival. How does that coordinate with the county? Is there some process they contact somebody here and we reserve the space for them for that event?
Right now, they just um, right now, they just would contact the Sedgwick County Parks, get an application, fill out the applications, submit the application back to Sedgwick County Parks, along with supplemental information as required by application, which would normally include a map where there would circle around or color around the designated area that they want to use. And and then that application gets reviewed by the park and then the park would and the dates and then the park would say whether they have availability or not on that certain date.
So what I'm getting to, and again, I appreciate all the work that's been done, but I'm wondering. I mean, I perceive this is a response to the the damn jam, if you will, issue that happened a year ago. And and we I guess we felt we needed didn't have a policy that we needed basically to to manage the, I guess, the request kind of got beyond what we had envisioned happening out there. This seems like a response to that. And I'm just curious, you know, Sedgwick County's been around a long time. We have one essentially situation happened, which we did get through, by the way, and I don't know that I would look backwards and say we did anything wrong. Is this policy even really necessary?
This policy would allow, well, this policy would clearly require all of the stakeholders that would normally show interest in forcing the the county and state laws to actively review all of these applications and have a say in advance of the approval or denial and their recommendations. So this would avoid situations where maybe something got miscommunicated or something didn't reach a designated department or whatnot. And then on the 11th hour, there is a concern that would create for the safety or security of an individual. Also, this gives certainty to the applicants that all of the stakeholders who would need to review this already reviewed it. So they they don't come out of at the 11th hour once again with a additional requirement or protest which the applicant wasn't aware.
I guess, and I'll my final comment. So again, I typically don't really like more regulations. That's what this feels like is regulations, its rules, its hurdles to jump through to get things done. I think the magic of this is on the bottom of page six where it talks about reviewing officer will basically coordinate and review this application with the the sheriff's office, the Sedgwick County Manager's Office, EMS, Fire District Number One. By the way, inside the city, make sure that be W F D. Because Sedgwick County Fire District Number One is we respond to Coleman Parking Lot. All right. We're not going to coordinate with Wichita Fire Department on and W P D on the Coleman Parking Lot. If we're going to be consistent here and the emergency management, risk management. And so because we're we're interfacing with all those folks to get their opinions on whether this is going to be okay or not, that is all considered and necessary before the reviewing officer then approves the application. So again, I think the magic is on is this paragraph right here, but I still think it's missing a couple of points there for the Coleman Parking Lot. Again, so if that's really the process we're creating, this entire document here is really about what I just read. That's really why this policy here is 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 existing so that someone who applies for to use one of these one of these county-owned properties, we check with all the right people to before before it's approved. That's really what this is doing. And welcome to correcting if I said that wrong, but that means the magic of this entire policy is that paragraph on the bottom of page six.
And I'm on sheriff's on too. So if we need to pick to him on some of those things, that might be helpful.
In reference to the Coleman Parking Lot, that falls on us. PD will not respond there. So that is, we take care of the Coleman Parking Lot for any type of events. When there's fights in the parking lot, they dispatch us to them. I can't speak to the fire department, but from a standpoint of if there's an event at Coleman Parking Lot, that's strictly us.
And Sheriff, thank you for that answer. I totally understand what you said. I just think in terms of trying to get along with Wichita, we ought to have an agreement perhaps that they would respond to a fight in the parking lot right across the street from the wave. If that's happening, I would hope the PD would respond to that, even though it's not technically their jurisdiction, but
I would hope for two. That's not been the case so far.
All right. Thank you.
Interesting. Thank you for that, Sheriff. Sheriff, if you have anything else, Sheriff, we've talked on this. He's by and large is accepting this in the language it's in now thinks it's a policy that's needed. Sheriff, if you have anything else you want to add, you're more than welcome to to jump in at any time.
No, sir, I you know, I appreciate M A C B D and and Armon including us in these conversations and so we've read over them pretty extensively and we agree with the language that Armon is proposing.
Okay, very good. Rusty, we bounced this off EMS and Fire too. They generally approving?
Chief Waterman and Chief Williams and Fire Marshal Crisp have all had eyes on this and they're all in concurrence with this. They've talked to Tanya and they're good with it.
Okay, I think I'm on they're going to vet out a couple more things that were raised today. When are you thinking this was going to come before the B O C C on an agenda?
I can make any changes that the B O C C wants me to make at the moment's notice and have it ready at whenever B O C C feels comfortable.
Tony, when you want to get this thing on an agenda?
I'd like to get it this month. So we'll look at December 18. And I might just add, I understand Commissioner How, where you're at on this policy, but this does help our facility staff or assets of these of these properties to have this policy kind of guidelines for us. So I'll just add that to that.
I'll let you know, I filibustered for 30 minutes so he'd get here in time. That's all.
Okay, Tanya, thank you. I'm on. Thank you, Justin, your guys' team. Thanks for this. Sheriff, thanks for for giving us some info on this and being involved in the process. Appreciate it. Okay. Next up.
Okay, next we have Mary Beth Jarvis, who was president and CEO of Nexus, and she is here to give us a report on the Nexus Entrepreneurship Program.
Mary Beth, good morning. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You guys had an event discussion for me while I was here this morning. I I felt all warm and fuzzy. So thanks for that. Good morning. Thank you for your time. I'll take just a minute and then I'm happy to to answer any questions. We as mentioned, Nexus is an entrepreneurial support organization. We're based here in Wichita. We do work around Sedgwick County and the state and even broader the region, particularly when it comes to mobilizing capital for high-growth potential early-stage companies. We basically are the in-sourcing of the grow our own part of economic development. And in that vein, Sedgwick County invested just about a year ago $100,000 in the work that we were doing as part of the matching funds needed for federal and regional grants that had come through to Nexus. So I'm going to review a little bit about those grants, the work that we did, the the metrics that resulted during the year that Sedgwick County was involved. And then again, happy to take some questions, but also look a little bit into the future. So just to review, so our work is really done. We consider it in sort of three buckets. The guerrilla warfare of connecting early-stage entrepreneurs who are off the ground. There's plenty of folks that are there helping you form your business and get your license and take those initial steps, SBA, SBDC, there's folks that do that. But once you're started, you tend to find yourself at an entrepreneur, you know, sort of desert island status. And we are there for growth-minded entrepreneurs, ready to be job creators, ready to build the great businesses of tomorrow and help them acquire customers, help them get coached, help them get the resources and mentorship that they need. So that building of community around growth-minded entrepreneurs, big facet of what we do. We also run a series of programs that are all about connecting growth-stage entrepreneurs to their customer bases. In many cases, you've got a small business and their path to growth is selling to large enterprises. Well, goodness gracious, if they don't know how to do that because you can't even get in the door or know how to work with a Coke or a Cargill or a Spirit or a Textron in order to become a supplier, become a partner and grow. So we run a series of programs that we call Next Stage that are in that arena. And then we have a third focus, which is to mobilize capital. Those folks with growth-minded ambitions as entrepreneurs, but they need other people's money to help make that growth possible. And equity of opportunity is really our focus there. It's all well and good if you have you know, six rich uncles and and a country club membership to find early-stage capital, but we really want to ensure that those founders with the best ideas and the the greatest ambitions to grow businesses have the opportunity to access risk capital, growth capital, early-stage capital from our Angel Investment Syndicate and the other players that we connect with in the region. So to do that work, about three years ago, we applied for and were granted the first ever in the state, actually, the first in the state, actually, the first two ever in the state of Kansas Economic Development Administration federal grants under the Build to Scale Program. Uh, we got a call from Senator Moran, uh, three years ago on the first of October, and he said, congratulations. And who the heck are you people? And because we're a new organization compared to most of the folks that do this work under federal grants. And so between the feds and the Kaufman Foundation out of Kansas City, we had just about a million dollars worth of outside money coming into the region to help Kansas entrepreneurs grow, to help our operations here in Sedgwick County thrive and therefore to help the entrepreneurs we thrive in turn. Uh, and but we needed to show some amount of local public sector support if we were going to fulfill the charter of those federal grants and that regional philanthropy, uh, and also have a shot at future grants from those same bodies. And so we came before this body and the commission uh, and received, for which we're very grateful, $100,000 of that needed million dollar match. So for a a small but but highly valued slice of the pie, Sedgwick County gets to share in some of these great results that I'll talk through here. And I've got in in front of the commissioners and sorry, Commissioner Meitzner, um, you've missed out, but we we've got an email version. I'm happy to forward. Um, but we had a couple of metrics that were about activity, the stuff we would do, the outputs of our work. Um, and so we had the number of technical assistance and coaching resources, those one on one or one to to a few meetings where we helped entrepreneurs get the or investors get the resources and 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 help that they needed. Um, we we did 694 of those uh, in the year that began September or excuse me, October 1st of 2023 through September 30th of 2024. So in that one year period where Sedgwick County was involved, um, we had a, uh, we, in our agreement with City of Wichita, which also came in with a similar amount of funding during the course of this last year of these big grants. They asked us to set a target and we set a target with City of Wichita that we'd do 200 of those in a year, and we actually did just under 700. Uh, and that was more than 2,000 over the course of the three year grant, um, as we measured it for the feds. Uh, we also pledged to have a certain number of startups served where we didn't just sit down with them once or twice, but really got them through our in-depth programs. We rolled up our sleeves and really made a difference in the growth of their company, weekly coaching workshops, the different characteristics of our in-depth programs. Um, our annual goal that we agreed to with the City of Wichita, we'd do 25 of those a year. Uh, we actually did 110 of those in the final year of the grant. 48 of those startups were here from Sedgwick County. So a big chunk of our work devoted in that in-depth work, really helping them move the needle was was for startups right here in Sedgwick County. We have some additional data for those folks that we spent that kind of quality time and work with. 61% of those startups that went through those in-depth programs during that year, that year timeframe were led by minority or female founders, traditionally underserved by startup programs around the country and in our region. And we're proud of that. And we've got specific data for the different programs that we took folks through and how those numbers kind of played out. And then we also had a metric for the feds and a goal with the city of how many group education works at that one to many, um, where we help them with subjects that all, you know, sort of commonly entrepreneurs need help with. How to do digital marketing without breaking the bank, how to incorporate AI into my business to help make my tiny team feel big and utilize the tools of tomorrow. So we had a goal with City of Wichita, we'd do 30 of those in a year, and we actually did 110 of those in the final year of these of this federal grant and Kaufman grant. And then we have three metrics that are more about results, right? The outcomes. Commissioner Meitzner, welcome. It's good to have you in person. So you just missed out on my handout so much. You wanted to be here for it. One of those is importantly, jobs created or retained. Uh, we set a goal with the City of Wichita that we'd get to 50 of those in the one year that y'all were involved in this work. Uh, we actually got to 458. 67 of those in the third year were were here in Sedgwick County. I looked back over the three year life of the grant because you're matching while it came in the last year of the grant was really to help for the entire three year period. Uh, and that number exceeds 300 jobs in Sedgwick County. 340 bucks a job. We'll take it in terms of what I know sometimes incentives for job creation and economic development. Uh, and those are jobs that, you know, are are continuing to exist and companies are continuing to grow here in Sedgwick County. So we're excited about that. We also had a metric around private capital mobilized and leveraged. So while we get some federal and and local public sector money to help our staff do our work, um, the real beauty here is that we get private sector investors involved and putting their own money at risk with these growing companies. And so, um, in the last year of the grant, we had an annual goal in our City of Wichita agreement that we'd mobilize a half a million dollars here in in the region and 2 million of that would be leveraged, meaning folks from outside money from outside our direct involvement went into these growing startups. We actually mobilized $785,000 during that year. Um, only $65,000 of that was in Sedgwick County, but it's very lumpy. So I went back and looked over the three years of the grant. Uh, and we had just under $2 million mobilized, two startups right here in Sedgwick County. And those startups also raised an additional $40 million beyond what we were able to directly lead investors to for them. So that means that the the privates or the public sector investment here is dwarfed by the private sector funds that go into these growth minded companies right here in Sedgwick County and and then broadly through her work throughout the region. Pretty impressive, just in one year. If we don't take just Sedgwick County into account, um, we had, uh, you know, more than $130 million that was leveraged. So meaning our almost a million that we got into startups during this one year period, which by the way, was a disaster in terms of the broader capital market. So really heroic that we were able to get that kind of capital mobilized locally. Um, and those startups into which we mobilized, you know, 80% of a million dollars actually brought in 130 million plus from other investors that that are, you know, once they appear in front of our angel group, once they get affirmation that they're worthy of check writing, then that opens the doors for them to getting regional and national capital from other sources, and they did so in spades. Uh, and the last metric that we had for the feds that we shared with y'all was just that we continue to grow the angel investor group, the private check writers, those folks here in town that are devoting some of their own resources to make a bet on these entrepreneurs, these growing young startups. We had 49 members in 2024, 70% plus of those were here in Sedgwick County. Our goal in the City of Wichita agreement was 30, so we exceeded that. If I look over the life of the grant, each of those years, 65 to 75% of our angel investor members are from right here in Sedgwick County. So we are finding folks with means to take a bet on tomorrow's great companies and our angel group is is a means by which we're able to do that. So we're excited about these results and super grateful for the role that you played. Um, we have, uh, we are a startup for startup. Uh, we have a staff of five and and we're young and we're lean. Uh, we find ourselves putting in these grant applications with, you know, less zeros than everybody else because we are doing lots of things with the dollars entrusted to us and the small staff that we that we move on with nimbleness. Um, and lastly, I'll just say we are, uh, we are in the period of the next sort of round. We have alongside Wichita State University and the Create Campaign and Grover Labs, our broadened partnership for the EDA, the United States Economic Development Administration Build to Scale Grant. We have put in for the grant that would be from 2025 to 2027. That is a larger one time grant. It'll be about $700,000 that would come from the feds plus a promised uh, additional contribution by the Kaufman Foundation of $550,000 to Nexus. So we should hear by the latter part of January where that goes. And that is not contingent upon Sedgwick County or the City of Wichita, any of the local public sector entities weighing in from the beginning, promising to help match that grant. But if we get that and we start to do really valuable work on that grant, um, then, you know, I may engage y'all in conversation uh, as that three year period matures and we have the opportunity to say, hey, can we show local public sector support that keeps the the larger dollars, the federal dollars and the regional dollars pouring into our efforts right here in Sedgwick County?
All right. Mary Beth, thank you. Appreciate all you do through Nexus. Appreciate the data too. And when we make an a contribution or an investment from the Economic Development Fund, to be able to have the metrics to see and show the public and the taxpayer return on investment, I think is important. I I have the luxury of being involved a little bit by seeing a lot of your entrepreneurs at your events and talking to these people. I used to run around that startup culture and that small business ecosystem pretty frequently. And and I'll tell you, the stability you're providing, the encouragement you're providing, the resources you're providing is making a significant difference in this community. 80% of all small businesses in America fail within two years. Your track record is much better because you're providing stability and the resources and the capital, the needed capital to empower these entrepreneurs and the job growth is what matters. We have to grow in this community. We have to grow in the small business entrepreneur startup climate is a big catalyst to our growth. Can't just be dependent on our big industry. The engine that's going to turn here is going to be our small business climate and you're helping to really motivate that. So I'm so encouraging. The stat is so encouraging. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Yeah, um, the county manager made it made it clear that I wasn't just to stand up here and tell stories about these amazing entrepreneurs, that I could do that all day. Because as you know, that it can be a very lonely business and it can be isolating. Uh, and then sometimes your hard work seems like, you know, it is in a vacuum, you know, because the market doesn't catch on or you know, the time is not with you. And so to build connective tissue that helps support these and frankly creates in the in the core hearts of more of ours, you know, this region is better at breeding great employees than it is at breeding mavericks and innovators. And if we're going to take our role in the economy of tomorrow that I think our region deserves to take, then we need to, you know, inspire their courage and then support them. You know, if I'm sitting at Textron with my cushy office and my 401k, but I've got this itch. Am I gonna, you know, dive into that if I don't look and see a supportive environment out there to to, it's not going to do the work for me, right? It's still hard building a business. But those economic superheroes need, they need, um, you know, wingmen, and that's what we.
Go ahead. Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mary Beth, thank you for the presentation and as you've, but the also it's helpful that you send, keep us informed and your events or your meet and greets with these people or they give their presentations. I'm not able to make all of them, but most of them that I've been at, it's it's very impressive. Meet all the young entrepreneurs and.
Super indigering.
And, uh, yeah, it is. It's it's, so I would encourage not only our fellow commissioners, but anybody else that would like to to witness that it be, you kind of see that momentum that's past our our control of trying to do it. We just play a role and you introduce us and we say hi and and that's great. Let's keep keep feeding us the information. So thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman. Hey, I thank you for the presentation and I agree with the previous comments. I've been to a few of those events and they they were really uh, fun to see the ideas come forward from the excited people that are just just getting started in some new ideas. So that's always been fun. I was, I've always been impressed with the with the with the group you bring together. I do have a couple of quick questions on on four, five and six on your sheet here. It's talking about, apparently he's talking about a larger region than just Sedgwick County. So is this a state level? Demograph, I mean, you say like 458 jobs created or retained. Is that statewide or what is that?
That is, yeah, that is statewide for the directly for the entrepreneurs that we serve with our in-depth programs. So we don't, if we sat down with you twice and helped you find a branding agency or an intellectual property attorney or just the courage to get through another week, that we don't count that. But for those folks that go through our in-depth programs where we really roll up our sleeves and those are, those are entrepreneurs statewide. So that's where the broader data comes.
You say, you say like 67 out of 458. So our our county, what I've noticed in all three of these demographics, so we talk about that stat, then we talked about the capital mobilized and leveraged. And then I'm talking about the, um, well, really just those two, I guess, primarily. The county, you know, our Sedgwick County is one sixth of our state. So I was, I always look at that as a benchmark saying, are we, are we doing one sixth of the whatever it is we're doing?
Right.
And in both of these demographics, we're actually below that number.
And that's, again, it's a lumpy business, hence pulling out the full three years. Like we were at the first year of the grant, it was 1.29 million just in Sedgwick County that was directly mobilized. And then more of that was leveraged, whereas in the last grant, the last year, Sedgwick County companies weren't generally raising. And so it was just a $65,000 direct mobilization. Hence the multi-year sort of nature. Because I think it, we end up seeing a more proportional share. Um, and in fact, you know, sort of an exaggerated share because we're here and they find us first.
Are these, are these numbers based on since the beginning or is this just from through the end of September for one year period?
Correct.
Okay.
The latter. I just brought the outcome ones over the three years because they just tend to be. We don't double, triple count, right? Like those jobs created over three years are not the same jobs, right? Like we de-duplicate. Those become cumulative, but not duplicative. But you can really see the power of it over multi-year.
And I I always think about Weba and GWP and Wichita Chamber, Regional Chamber of Commerce, and they're all trying to do similar, meet and reap, you throw them in as well. They're they're trying to do some of the same things. And so when someone talks about jobs created, I always wonder, you know, is this like a a community based, all the, all the folks involved in it are creating jobs together? Or is this Nexus doing this individually? Uh, I mean, I hate to.
It's a great question. Most of the the startups we work with are not yet at the membership organization stage. They're not joining the chamber yet. They're not even in Weba yet, right? Like these are solopreneurs going to three, going to five, going to 20. Um, and when they get to that, they start to think about how they incorporate themselves into the more established business community. They're still at the scrappy startup stage with us. So we don't tend to have the same overlap audience wise with folks like the Chamber or Weba. But we are definitely doing the same kind of work as the Greater Rich Partnership or as REAP, right? Like this is the how do you create an environment where tomorrow's great businesses start and thrive here? Don't just bring them in. Don't just, you know, we've got to keep investing in the, um, in retaining and growing our existing businesses and our large businesses, absolutely. But we can't miss a generation of growing tomorrows and that's, that's where our work really.
Final quick questions. The grant, the grant was, how much total did we receive in a grant from the feder?
It was, it was a combination of three grants for a total of 1.05 million.
Okay. And that's something we think we're going to see that that again in the future at some point, potentially. And that's why, so at some point you'll be coming back to us, asking us for another local support at some point in the future.
Only if we're really good.
Okay. Thank you so much.
That's a great answer. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Mary Beth, thanks for being here. As you recall, a couple of years ago, when you came and asked us for money, I was a little restless in the time because I didn't know what the return was and you didn't have any data when we first started talking about it.
That's what working for the feds will do. You get really good at data.
I appreciate the data. Uh, it shows that the investment was worth our time and our and our effort. Whenever we invest public dollars in anything, we look for a return on that investment. And we're a pretty conservative group and we want to make sure that when we give you money, that something comes back that's going to contribute to our community. So I appreciate the data that you provided us. That's exactly what we need if we're going to continue to do anything like this in the future. So I I know that when we first started talking about this, I I was not one of the supporters to begin with. And because I just didn't have any data to make a decision on. So thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
Mary Beth, thank you. Continue on. Great work being done at Nexus and appreciate you coming to update us.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Kaufman, sir.
Legislative platform. Okay. Um, so when I think of December, I think of holidays and of course legislative platform. So, um, this morning we have Watkins Public Strategies here, of course, best lobbies from. Um, we've got Jason Watkins here, Jessica Lucas and Thaneal Rink are here. And, um, the last time we talked, uh, we went through the legislative platform and there were some edits and changes. So I took those and made those changes. So you have, of course, the draft in front of you. I don't know how you want to, how you want to proceed, if you want to go through each item kind of like we did last time. And then, of course, we'll want to hear from Jason and Jessica on how we maybe want to move our legislative platform forward. Um, of course, because they're doing the work in Topeka. So does that sound like?
Yeah, why don't we, yes, why don't we start with the end in mind? When are we, when is the date that we need this thing finalized? What what typically do we do?
I think it's typically the end of December, but I'm going to let Jason let you ram.
I think typically it is the end of December election years.
Okay.
Sometimes in the past, I've thrown a little bit of a wrench in that.
Okay.
I've seen it done both ways with the county. Where the current commission in December adopts it. If the incoming commissioners have no issues, it really doesn't come up again. If the incoming commissioners have no issues, it really doesn't come up again. If they do, then I've seen it brought back up in January. I can remember at least one instance, I think probably Commissioner How can as well. Where you actually adopted this agenda after the legislature had already started its session. That's not ideal.
That's helpful to know. So I guess the goal here is we're not working on a final draft today. We're talking through these things, getting feedback from. Jason and Jessica and then and then we're still working towards a final draft, correct? Okay, why don't you walk us through these topics?
Okay, so of course we've got this split out by appropriations and policy. So we'll start with appropriations on aging. We are still waiting to hear from the net from her agency. So you'll see kind of in red there that we're waiting on that. So for appraiser and elections office, it is. Support legislation, either A appropriating additional budget for the county election office and the county appraisers office, or B. The state taking over full control of these functions and offices. Basically stating that this is a state mandate with local property tax funding. Again, this was on the KC platform under tax and finance number six.
Jason, does this have a chance? That why we got you here today is we need to know which things we need to leave on here and which ones we may need to push aside.
That's big lift. Understand exactly where we're coming from on this. And I think it's good to to take this position. Also want to temper expectations. You know, you're maybe a little more likely to to see perhaps some funding than you are to see the state say, okay, we'll just take it over. So.
Right, that's helpful. So is this, Tanya, is this matching what's on the KAC platform? Is this language a match or are we adding the?
It's not a match. And I I'll go run back to my office and grab it. But. The way that they put this on the KAC platform, it's it's very general their statement. It doesn't, it doesn't completely say this. It's. It's pretty general in their in their language.
I would, thanks, Jason, for weighing in because to me, I think it's important that we. We take a strong position to say, this is the challenge we have and whatever works out from there. And I agree, it's probably a tough lift in some cases, but I I don't think we're harmed by bringing this up. Okay.
I don't either. And Mr. Chairman, if I may. We've been very, very fortunate over the last handful of years in terms of our success in Topeka with our legislative agenda. I'd like to take credit, say that's all due to my firm and while most of it probably, I'm kidding. It gets, we have been very successful. More successful than than usual. And so I do think it's important to keep in mind that sometimes big ideas take a little bit of time. This will be a, this will be a new and big idea to policymakers in Topeka. And and Commissioner Meitzner is exactly right. It's important and we need to start telling the story. But I think we need to understand this is the type of thing that if we don't get it done the first year that it's on your legislative agenda, that doesn't mean it's failed. There there you make incremental progress and that's hard to measure because success isn't there until it actually, you know, gets sixty three, twenty one and one, right? So I think on something like this, that's important to keep in mind. Want to make one final point so I don't have to make it later. We're talking about appropriations. This is going to be a different session than what we've seen post-COVID. There's just been a ton of money in government that is starting to run out. Tax receipts for November were three point six some percent below estimates. We haven't seen that for the last few years. Every every month it's been the S, the the receipts have exceeded the estimates. That trend is starting to reverse. State passed a tax cut last year. So there's going to be less money flowing in to the state general fund. That combined with the fact that all the support that state governments have been getting from the federal government because of COVID and post-COVID, that's starting to run out. So you're going to have a different budget environment. And the final thing I'd say just for the. Kind of the FYI for the commission and key staff in terms of how this legislative session is going to be different. They're looking at doing a session schedule that's based on ninety calendar days instead of ninety sessions. So if you think about that, a lot of times we're we're wrapping up the session the end of April, even sometimes into mid-May. If you look at a ninety day calendar session, you're done mid-April. That really changes the budget environment. There may not be an omnibus budget. It's it's going to be a rapid fire budget process. And so as we look at these appropriations items, I do think it's important that the commission prioritize. So.
That's good to know. Jessica.
And I just want to add, when we're talking about appropriations. Conceptually, these ideas are great, but we really do have to have specifics, you know, when I'm sitting in there and Jason and I are having these conversations. Are we talking $5 million? Are we talking $10 million? And so. You know, what are what are these things going to cost? If we're introducing ideas, I'm not as worried about the specifics. But when we really are pushing for something that we want to see come to the end of the line, we have to have real numbers to carry that through.
It's good to know. Thank you.
That's good. So we need to come up with a number just for us or for whole state?
Well, I think that that's a good question for the Association of Counties. If indeed this is on their platform, what are we? I mean, certainly Sedgwick County needs to understand what the cost implications are for you. We want to make sure we're representing that and that the dollars are going to be there for you. But if this is a statewide initiative and we're talking about one hundred and five counties. We need to make sure the Association of Counties has an actual understanding of the cost involved as well. And, you know, for better or worse, that may be what ends up torpedoing the whole idea, but that information is going to be asked for.
But can we ask, Brandy, is the Association of Treasurers, have they got this going on?
Yeah.
Comment. We ought to all be on the same page for sure. Us, KAC.
So the Association of Counties, they've they're they've done a survey of all the one hundred and five counties as far as what their budget for it's all are. We have about fifty seven counties that have responded to that number. So we have, we have a half the number. And I think that number we're looking at, like I think last time I looked at it, it was just over eight million for statewide that we were short.
I'm sorry, did you say eight million?
Yeah.
Okay.
But like I said, that was only fifty, I think she said fifty seven counties. I'll have to go relook at them.
And when you follow up, can you find out the size? Because if it's fifty seven of Western Kansas counties, that's different than if those fifty seven account for Johnson, Douglas, Wyandotte, Sedgwick, etc. I know, I know the big five were included in that number, but then the rest made up.
Thank you, Brandy. That's helpful. So that's the last point under treasure for the motor vehicle increase in funding, eight million dollars is short for the state. That's what you just said.
That was four fifty seven counties. So there's still the remaining counties haven't responded. So we don't know a true number, but I mean, we have a good.
A treasure, the last point of appropriation. So my question now, Tanya and Tim, do we need to? Do we need to try to establish a number for appraisal and elections office the way that treasurer's office has just given us? Is that number exists to the?
Can I can I mention something too? So one of the things that I think matters on this elections office is that for many counties, the hundred and one. They don't have elections. They have a clerk. So I wonder if there is something that would allow us, if that might be more effective to try and focus on those four. As opposed to a hundred, well, however many appraisers, hundred five counties with contracted appraisers or whatever, or even an urban designation. For Johnson and Sedgwick for some of these bigger ticket items. Can you speak to that if there's any strategy component? Jessica or based on your guys' points?
I'm turning it to Jason.
Yeah. So what Lindsay's talking about is the the. I can't remember what the threshold is, but there's a threshold to where you go from the county clerk running your elections to having an actual election commissioner. That's appointed by the Secretary of State. And I do believe that it that it is for counties, right? And and again, as we both mentioned, in the other counties, it's just the county clerk that runs the election. So. I I mean, maybe you could take the approach that those counties that that have an actual election commissioner. That the state should kick in money for their election office. I think the challenge with that is those counties with county clerks are also paying for their elections. And whenever we just were talking with a client yesterday. About the fact that when you're crafting a bill, you can't just think about your local legislators. You know, we have to get votes from those folks in Western Kansas, Southeast Kansas to get anything through. So that would be the challenge maybe with that idea.
The reason I think these are pulled out, again, I almost would like to see the the first statement. Modified to add the treasure statement on the back end. I think there's really, it's almost the same thing, same purpose. There's underfunding the state functions and these offices basically are being supported with local property tax dollars. I thought of, I was talking to KAC chairman this morning. He's over at the Hyatt because of KAC conference and I mentioned, you know, I don't think this bill would ever go anywhere, but just simply write the bill. It would simply say something like you can't use property tax dollars. Local government to support state, the state offices. And yet I don't think that's going to fly, but here's what that would do. It creates conversation. Then then they're aware of, no, we do want local property tax dollars to fund those offices or. We're going to provide revenue, one way or the other. You gotta, you've got to stop ignoring the topic. Either you address the idea of saying, we think local tax dollars is fine, then then understand that that's what we're doing. That's that's a solution. It works just fine. But I want them to recognize that's what we're doing. Because right now they're just, they're acting like we are wasteful. And these property tax dollars have, you know, we have decisions to cut that. We don't really have a decision to cut that. So. To the extent they think that's our decision, I would like to see a bill that says, we can't use local property tax dollars to fund these three offices, period. There's an answer. And I don't, and I'll tell you, the election office, I don't know if they're here this morning, we have about $10 million problem coming up. That equipment's aging out. Need $10 million to buy new equipment. Last time we we had a grant, but we also saved up money over a number of years. That's a $10 million problem looking at us right this minute, right, right now. And one of the problems with these three offices are we don't really have any way to get a manager's office to win their safe, where to find some efficiencies. They will trump that because Secretary of State says, this is my office. You run it to my satisfaction. We, if they argue they need more staff, they're going to get more staff. That's how it works. We we say yes, much like we do with the sheriff's office, so much like we do with other offices that are elected offices, but these are. Not elected offices, these are these are state functions, yet we have no control. We can't tell the appraiser how to do his job and that's by design. So because of that, the state should just take over the office. If they don't want to take over the office, at least pay for the office. I mean, it's just, that's fundamental, it's principle. And that's why these three things kind of go together. And so to me, the bill is you just can't use local property tech, property tax dollars to fund these three offices. I don't know how, maybe there's an exception to the election office, but the other two. Especially the tag office. Tag office is fee funded. So there is a solution to that one. And the two offices. They need to fund it. So that's that, again, every every county has an appraiser, right? That's fair to everybody. So why not just write that bill and that back to the state? That makes sense. The election stuff is a little more difficult because we have differences in what counties run their stuff, but. The appraiser's office is simple and so is the tag office, frankly. Those two bills could be written and say, we cannot use property tax dollars to fund those offices. It should be done by the state of Kansas. So.
So we have three departments. We have Appraiser Elections Office and Treasurer's Office that we're going to ask the state to help with. These are state mandated departments. How do we group this in here? Do we just do? One title with three subheadings and be very specific on each. I think that's the conversation we need to have. I mean. Is how do we do this in a way that's going to really move the needle for you guys and give you the ammunition you need, but clearly. Communicate with the challenge here for us is so we don't have to have that conversation here, but we got to figure out how we get treasurer. Appraisers and elections office, the same message communicated.
And on that, so I said fifty seven counties responded and they've sent me the information so that way I have. But it was fifty two counties that responded in the total right now with the fifty two counties was eight point nine nine million. The big ones had responded, yeah.
Let me just reiterate also, again, if they reject the concept of that bill, then they're then they're embracing the fact we're going to use local property tax dollars to fund their stuff. And that's what they may, and they intend for that to happen. So when they complain about local taxes. Being too high, they have first hand, this is their mandate. They're the ones that caused this and they would rather leave it that way.
Okay. Good to know. Good.
Okay, we'll work on that one. The next one then is com care and I I don't have a line here in here that I should, which is basically to support the association request to. And then it's the next two bullets, which is addressing the needs of the uninsured. And underinsured, even the promise of mental health reform, continue. Excuse me, reform, period. Continue and enhance funding to support behavioral health services for the uninsured. Second item then is a lot more fleshed out, building career pathways and supporting workforce in partnership with the Behavioral Health Center of Excellence. To address workforce shortage of qualified mental health professionals. The Kansas Behavioral Health Center of Excellence was established and is largely focused on addressing the workforce shortage. Through education and training opportunities as well as linking academic programs with community-based providers. In 2024, the Kansas Legislature made an additional investment to fund these programs. And ongoing support is needed to continue to make progress. In order to further leverage that investment, we recommended. We recommend that the Department of Health and Environment. Medicaid updated the state general. Medical education GME program to support. ASBH COE education programs. Tim. You want to speak to those too?
And certainly shorten if there's support for this. The first item is, it's kind of a protective factor. Jason talked about how funding is becoming reduced or but there's a potential that. That first bullet point addresses funding that comes to CMHCs now to provide mental health services to the uninsured. That's always been part of the partnership between CMHCs and the state. And so that's an ask to. Acknowledge that that cost continues to go up and so additional funding would be helpful, but at the very least, don't cut it. The second one is about a new entity that the legislature funded 2025 state fiscal year budget. Five million dollars that went into additional education programming. One of the benefits that we'll we'll see here fairly soon is an addictionologist fellowship that KU Med is going to run and we'll be able to. Have those folks in our, inside our walls delivering services. This is about. An edit to the state Medicaid plan that would allow the KDHE to draw down more federal fines to pay for. Medical education.
That makes sense what we're trying to get at here.
Yes, it does make sense. One thing I do want to share for the benefit and. KDHE, I was in a meeting recently with the Medicaid director and regarding GME. They have intentions of hiring a consultant to sort of review the state's GME plan. That's not likely to happen until after session. That's not to say that GME won't be discussed and I I know it's part of the Association's agenda. But I did just want to state for the record that my understanding of KDHE's position is to study the issue and look for something different in 2026.
Jessica, do you want us to change this language here, shorten the language?
Association language. So I think it's good to say that that's part of the association, but just wanted everyone to be aware that that was their position.
Do have a quick question. When we're all finished, we normally give you a little palm card that you can walk around with. This is too much information to put on a palm card. So if we approve a legislative platform, you know that this is important. Does it have to be on a palm card or just a bullet to point so that you know that we care about com care?
Yeah, I appreciate your question because when I first read that, my reaction was the same. This is too darn long. And then I thought, well, I'm not going to tell them to change it because it actually helps me understand what I'm talking about when I'm trying to explain this to legislators. So. I think if you wanted to shorten it, I don't want to create more work, but I think if you wanted to shorten it, it's not bad to maybe have maybe a separate supporting. Document with kind of supplemental information.
And we can give you this whole thing, but we need to tear down that palm card so that you know that this is a bullet that's important to us. And we give you the background information rather than have it all try and get it all on that palm card. I think you're right.
And really, if I summarize what was said here, this is about continuing. Continuing financial support. It's not asking for something new. It's saying to continue. Correct. So again, I don't, again, this is an appropriations discussion. I agree. But this is not like a policy. You're going to go write a bill. But this is not like a policy, you're going to go write a bill to do something. We're simply telling you what we have now, just we hope that that will continue. That's all we're saying here.
And increase it over time. The behavioral, it's really about support for the Behavioral Health Center of Excellence and continue to fund their efforts because that's what's going to help staff the state hospital, help com care, bureaucracy, those sorts of things.
So and having said that, so I don't, I don't know if this belongs on the shortlist at all. I mean, on the long list, this is great. Understand the need, but that shortlist is very special and much of this belongs on the shortlist. Because again, it's continuing funding, it's continuing to do what we're doing now. It's enhancing it if possible, but it's not necessarily a change of policy, if you will.
Okay. Next item then is CDO, Community Development Disability Organization. So as you can see, I took out the two bullets that we had there because I heard from Annette. And she provided me with the association's request in her head. So I just copied those four, I think it's four bullets down. Request to develop and implement a multi-year strategy to eliminate the state's IDD waiting list. Request to adopt an annual adjustment process for IDB funding to keep pace with cost increases. Request to develop strategies to assist the IDB system in supporting individuals with complex needs and to increase the intellectual development disability waiver, personal care services rates to ensure parity with the other Medicaid waiver of personal care services rates. So to me, what we had down pretty well paralleled with what inner tab was, had to have platform request. So those are the four that we have now.
I think we're good. Yeah, we've seen Starkey, they have their own legislative platform. We've seen that reconcile some of that and think we have it represented.
I think so.
Okay, good. I'm good.
Yep.
EMS, we are going to move that to the federal platform. Okay, then public services, we've got a lot here, so I'm going to go through these. First one is to support the address, support addressing the gap for youth and foster care with behavioral health issues. Second one, support 15 million for mental crisis inpatient beds. And I might just quickly refer to Tim on this. He had a meeting, I believe, yesterday with hospitals.
We had a call with Ascension yesterday and talked a little bit about things going on there. And Bruce Witt was on the call and it sounds like now the ask, so in the state fiscal year 2025, legislature authorized $5 million for all the private hot mental health head bed across the state. The new ask is going to be for $10 million. And it, they think that they can leverage that with some federal drawdown to get it to about 20. But it's an ask to fund inpatient beds for the uninsured and the underinsured. And it's part of the ecosystem in the community that supports behavioral health for, between our crisis program, those crisis beds, and then the state hospital. That's a, it's a need in that midsection there.
Questions there?
This is specifically for via Christie.
In our, in our communities, is for via Christie, but this is a statewide ask. And so last year, there, last year there was about 5 million and they got maybe two of that five. But the, but it's being spent across the state because this is a statewide issue. Our solution locally has traditionally been St. Joe.
As long as it's statewide issue, I was kind of worried because this would be a Christie beds. And I don't know that it's our place to lobby for a nonprofit beyond us. We've, we've got our own legislative agenda. They'll, they'll have their own.
We may want to drop that, that stuff that's in the parentheses.
And for clarity, the ask that via Christie and the hospitals are going to make is 15 million, which is three times what they're currently receiving and have received the last couple of years at 5 million to be shared among the hospitals.
Yesterday, the number that I heard was 10 because they think they can match that and draw that. It'd probably be worth a conversation with Bruce or the hospital association folks.
Okay. And so in that regard, we may want to just say support ongoing resources for mental crisis inpatient beds. This is money that they have been receiving and the idea is that they continue to receive until the state mental health hospital is opened. Whether they'll continue to need those dollars or not, I think is another story. But I would maybe take out the reference to the, in contradiction of what I said earlier, into the direct amount until we know better from the hospitals what they're going to be asking for.
Maybe just continued support. Okay.
Next one then is encourage the state to submit a Medicaid state plan waiver to use up to 5% of their medical spend to address non-clinical social determinants of health such as housing, nutrition, transportation.
Where did that one come from?
There are other states that are doing this now and it's an opportunity to address some, to address some things that aren't necessarily being addressed, but.
I guess, you know, to me, Medicaid is very special. It's for people who have disabilities and for elderly that have, that basically have run out of money that need care. It's, it's very specific population. To use those fun dollars for housing, nutrition, transportation for who?
For that same eligible population.
Okay. And I don't even know what housing, I don't know what this, I mean, I understand housing a little bit. Nutrition, does it mean like meal programs like?
Potentially, yes. It would be part of the Medicaid state plan that KDHE and Kdad's would work on to identify allowable expenditures. It's just an opportunity to use some federal funding that's matched 6040 to address these needs that impact health of this particular population. It wouldn't expand who's eligible for the funding. It would still be for that Medicaid, the current Medicaid population. It would just increase the number of services that were addressed.
I'm having trouble understanding why Medicaid dollars are going to be used for those three things, but I, maybe I'm, anything about for Medicaid, I'm not.
They're not used for them now, correct?
Not in Kansas.
Any thoughts to this?
So it's not expanding Medicaid clients. It's adding service monies to existing Medicaid clients.
Correct.
It's a model that exists across the country. Okay.
It be rewritten or more presentable?
I'll ask the second question, the follow-up question. Does this thing have a chance?
I tend to think probably not. It's, that's not probably something the legislature is going to be excited about, but I guess I'd ask Tim, you know, is that something that has to be done through an act of the legislature? Is that something that the agency can move towards on their own? Because we're not always just lobbying the legislature, right? Sometimes we're communicating with departments on your behalf.
It's possible that they could do that within an 1115 B waiver. I think that's how they're doing it in other states. So it could be just an agency opportunity.
Could you inquire for us and see if maybe?
Yeah, happy to inquire and I think probably appropriate to set up a meeting with Tim and the Medicaid director just to have this conversation if there's others that are interested in that. So we can do that follow-up there.
What about talking to Speaker Hawkins and just find out what his thoughts are on this idea? I, I think this is dead on arrival, guys. I'm sorry. I don't, the problem is there's not enough Medicaid dollars already. We keep talking about that and Medicaid is a dirty word in Topeka. And so we're talking about adding another burden to the already short budget and a waiting list of people who are getting trying to get on this list and you're going to add another thing to tax those dollars. Something that right now is not being spent on those things. We're going to add another burden to that list. And there's already a waiting list, there's already a shortage supposedly of people who want to get those services. We can't because we've not expanded Medicaid in Kansas. Does this make sense to add a few other population that now are going to get new services? They've not currently receiving them from this pot of money. I think this is dead on arrival.
Yeah, and just, just being frank, and it's not my job to judge whether your guys' ideas are good or bad. Sometimes you ask me and it's terribly uncomfortable. So I, I try not to do that. I will tell you that with this current legislature, phrases like social determinants of health are not popular. And so Commissioner Howell is not wrong. If you ask me, does this have a chance? Probably not. I think it's got a lot better chance working through the agency instead of the legislature, which we're very happy to help with. If we want to set up a meeting, we'll participate in that meeting. So.
And it also matters to me, again, you say it happens around the country. Is it just getting started? Is this a new thing? Is it California and Massachusetts and Washington state, or is this Oklahoma? It to me matters. And I think, and again, I think just because the idea is out there doesn't mean it's a good idea. I, I think right now, if you're reading our platform so far, the word Medicaid is in here. I can't, I've lost track now. We're using the word Medicaid a lot. We're talking all around Medicaid without using the word expand Medicaid. Because you know, that's a dead on arrival too. But we're talking all around it. We're trying to find ways of tweaking Medicaid without actually talking about expanding Medicaid. So this is, to me, this is the worst one so far. This one, because again, as you just mentioned, Jason, the social determinants of health, I, I'm sorry, that's, that's not going to sit well.
Would you mind following up with the agency and see what happens in the discussion? Thank you.
Okay, next one is endowed 10 million of opioid settlement and/or fund balance to provide a pool of funds for communities to apply for to increase availability of housing vouchers to address homelessness. Require a one-to-one match from municipalities to access funds if required by opioid settlement requirements. Model the voucher program after shelter plus care and restrict vouchers persons that experience opioid addiction and meet the definition of chronically homeless.
So this is a new program. This should be a new idea, a new, yeah, it's creative.
I wanted to make sure that you had a full array of ideas to consider.
I, I don't like the idea of using property tax dollars that puts pressure on people to pay their property taxes. You give it away to somebody else who's trying to get into a homeless, out of a homeless situation. There's irony built into that statement. You're taking, you're making it harder, you're adding burden to one person to stay in their home. You're trying to, they're trying to pay their taxes. They're feeling the burden of government and their, and their tax dollars are going to help somebody else who's trying to get into housing. You give me that strange look, Lindsay. I'm not making, I'm not making any sense here. Well, there's a match fund here. There's match money in this. You see the word talks about match money here? I'm against using any property tax dollars for this program.
Did this join platform rather than on our individual one?
City, county, chairman?
Yeah.
It sounds like, this sounds like we're carrying the water big time for the, for the whole state on this one.
Tim, is this something that you've discussed with others or is this an idea that is originating here?
It's originating here. Again, to give the commission a full.
Yeah, I see, I see what's, but the idea here is to try to open up another vein, a source of revenue to fund something that is being, that is stripped now and the resources aren't there to fund some of these things. And we have this opioid settlement. I see it. I want to give some thought to it. And I appreciate the creativeness.
This is Cedric County.
Yeah, that's, that's what we want to vet through is to, is there a way to create a program? And who's, who are the partakers in that? So I think that's the discussion.
In my mind, this would have worked with local opioid dollars getting matched. What I want to really do is get access to that, the state opioid dollars that they're sitting on right now. And this is an opportunity, we could, if we were going to be an applicant or if the city of Wichita were going to be an applicant, they could use their opioid dollars as match dollars rather than property tax if that was the direction they got.
But doesn't the state have to spend the opioid dollars essentially in local governments to provide services to some population? This money can't be used for anything else. It's earmarked for specifically for services for local governments. So whether we have a match program or not, that money eventually will flow down to local government for us to use for services. We don't have to tax people to get the money. We shouldn't have to do that.
And Commissioner Howell, I believe there are some limitations on the state in terms of how they can use those settlement funds. And they're doing grants and things along those lines. And they're, in Kansas's case, the, in most of the settlements, opioid settlements, not all, but most of them, the Kansas Attorney General has been authorized to act on behalf of all the municipalities that have entered into agreements, just like Sedgwick County and the city of Wichita has been mentioned as well, did that. Most large municipalities in Kansas did that. And so some of those questions would be to what extent the state of Kansas can or the Attorney General's office believes they may be able to utilize those funds for purposes, what the breadth of those purposes can be. And at this point, I'm not sure exactly what those limitations are, but there are limitations.
I can understand using some state dollars for that, but not local property tax dollars or sales tax dollars. I think, again, I understand the state might have to provide some non-federal money to go along with it. I get that, but I don't think it needs to be Cedric County property tax or sales tax revenue.
I think to clarify, Tim, your point is that we would use our opioid settlement funds that we receive directly as the match.
Correct.
To any then state-generated opioid dollars. So there would be no intention of using any other source of funds but opioid settlement dollars.
And I guess I would also ask, is this what the money was intended for? We're talking about housing now. This is opioid funds now being utilized for housing.
I think we entered into a discussion with the city of Wichita and hired a consultant to try to help us place some of these dollars and figure out what the best scope is and the idea of, of how they should be used. So I think that's still being vetted out, correct?
Correct. But there are certainly ties between homelessness, a lack of housing and addiction.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. Next one is to create an opioid settlement matching program where the state matches any local opioid settlement programming initiatives on a dollar-for-dollar basis for program startup costs. Then match local opioid settlement expenditures, one to two, one to $2 for two years. No, excuse me, for years two through five of that same initiative.
I think what would help here, Justin, could you give us some clarity, maybe a memo of what the state limitations are and what they're, how much they have that we expect that they're going to have and what the limitations are?
Yes, Chairman, I can do that.
Justin, can you make sure that we're copied on that information as well?
And uses the word program startup costs. What program are we talking about?
It would be an application process. It would depend on the, the provider's model of treatment.
I, I mean, this is a treatment program for people with drug and alcohol addictions. What is this exactly? Yes. Maybe you should add those words to that.
I, I think the appropriate step at this point is figure out what we're dealing with, with the state and then maybe we might go compile something that'll be, because the goal here is to try to partner with the state on the funds that they have. That's the goal. Trying to do it in a creative way. So let's figure out what the state has, what those limitations are. Okay.
Okay, next one then is create a pool of matching funds for capital expenditures related to the development and implementation of juvenile crisis intervention.
Right now, there's statute that allows for the creation of juvenile crisis intervention centers. There's no funding for it. And so there haven't been any of those implemented across the state. So if there were some funding available at the state level, that may get the wheels turning.
Yeah, we work in some other areas and very clearly understand the need for this. Do you have an idea, Tim, on kind of to Jessica's question earlier? Kind of a dollar amount in terms of that ask?
Not right now, but I can certainly work on that.
Yeah, I mean, even if we knew, like if Sedgwick County were to say, hey, we want to do this and this is what it would cost, at least we would know for Sedgwick County's purposes and then extrapolate that.
Yeah, this is a discussion that's ongoing right now here. Steve, you have any thoughts you want to add to that so that?
Well, I was just wondering if Steve Stonehouse, the Department of Corrections, I was wondering about the funding from the Juvenile Justice Oversight Committee that I thought there was $2 million allocated for that.
I think the, one of the issues is which population is being served. Is it the juvenile corrections population or is it juvenile, juvenile mental health population?
Yeah.
Foster kids crossover both of those, so.
Okay, yeah.
But there's been no application for, for the, for those funds. So it's carried over from year to year.
So if those funds are there, your, your, your description here is making me curious. You're saying the money's there. Does it require an appropriation or is it a?
It requires an application. Some entity needs to apply to run one. There's been one application that I'm aware of and it was withdrawn. And it was withdrawn by Johnson County.
I think, I think some of the conversations we're having here internally is, is what does it take to actually start this here and to operate this? Seems to be a little bit more corrections doesn't want to do it. Calm care doesn't want to do it because the crossover is complex. We do have an organization here that does children's mental health that we are meeting with. Next week to engage this conversation on a deeper level. And Representative Owens, Senate-elect Rep Owens, we've had this conversation with him too. As to what this could look like. And, and do they want to support or they already given money to MIR and some of these things? Is there an agency here that they can help subsidize with a block grant of some sort or?
So we also represent Ember Hope. So we have.
They're doing.
Insight into this work and they are the county's child welfare provider. One of the things that I wanted, that because words matter. I, what they're talking about is psychiatric rehabilitation treatment facility that's secure. Secure PRTF and the wording we're using here is juvenile crisis intervention center, which I believe there was an RFP that went out and. For a variety of reasons, nothing came from that. And so I want to make sure if we are talking about a request for, for dollars to help support this, either through those existing dollars or state money. That we're in alignment on what that is. And if we're asking for these crisis intervention and for whatever reason, there's barriers to development of that. And not asking for secure PRTF, then we may be missing the boat. Again, we, you know, we're speaking for, with our knowledge of. What Ember Hope is proposing and what I believe they talked about at the meeting last week, and that was secure PRTF.
Does this match what we're?
This is actually a different level of care, but if, I mean, so funding for another PRTF, a local PRTF would also be very helpful.
Okay. But the juvenile crisis intervention is something different than what?
Yeah, that's a different kind of facility that I don't fully understand the hurdles. To bring them forward.
The KARs that, that the state put forward were. Are prohibited. It's, it's the level of a hospital, quite frankly. So that's what.
So.
It scared us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Sorry to take so much time on this one, but I, I know there's tremendous need here. And to Jessica's point, words matter, but I'm, I'm also trying to figure out. So the money's there and you can go apply for a grant to get the money. But the problem is that the administrative rules and regs are making it too burdensome for anybody really to be able to do it. So, and this is an honest question, Tim. Are we better? Trying to go change those administrative rules and regs, either with the agency or through legislation? So that we could apply for the grant and get the money? Because if the money's there and we just have something on our legislative platform that says we want the money. Legislature is going to say, well, sorry, there, go figure it out.
Steve, you've made some of those recommendations, haven't you?
Yes.
Yeah. This is another one of those things where there's a much deeper conversation and there's multiple systems at the state level that need to.
Should we be considering some language that says, you know? So, support efforts to fund. Secure placements for. These youth or, or you know, something that's a little bit more general that enables us to figure out. What are those who potentially can do that, where we can find the dollars? I don't.
Well, but I think we're talking again about two different things. I mean, we've got secure PRTF, right? And I mean, those are kids that are in the system, coming into the system and we need to be able to. We need to secure them.
That's right.
Uh, in a facility where they can get their treatment. This crisis intervention is, that's me, that, that's more. That's not somebody that we're trying to put into a secure facility. It's, it's somebody that's in crisis and we may only need them there for eight, 24, 36 hours. So there are two very different things and both need to be funded. Am I correct?
But does it make sense to attack the legislation to try to make, open that up for more flexibility? Is that what?
You can. We've talked around this many, many times. And I think the, I think the difficulty is that. The $2 million annual funding doesn't overcome the barriers of the cost to the entity that would maybe provide this service. In other words, the, the expectation is that there's going to be kids in these beds who don't have a pay source. And they don't have any other way to manage adequate staffing. And to hold these beds, they aren't going to be filled all the time, I don't believe. So it's, it's a costly endeavor that they've got to have beds available. They got to have staff to support them, but they may not be filled on a daily basis. And whether the funding model that exists is adequate to encourage, it hasn't encouraged anybody to take this on. And so I think there's a deeper conversation on what specific types of beds we need, what the cost is and how that's going to be subsidized. To ensure it's available for the kids that need it.
And, and it's a deep conversation. And the, and the problem that has to be solved is Steve has kids in the system that no one will take our kids. No one's taken our kids and, and they need crisis intervention. They need stability and they need help and nobody's taken our kids. So we've got to find a way, whatever the route is, we've got to solve that problem.
This also ties into the issue that we have kids who maybe in the past would have been. Charged with a crime and, and gone through some kind of adjudication process, but they're handed over to DCF. And then Amber Hope and foster care basically has to try to manage these kids who are. Very troubled and they're, then again, a secure facility, they, there's no conviction. So a secure facility may not be the right thing. If you think there's a psychological issue, a PRTF may be really useful. A lot of these kids just need a place to go. And right now they're going to the offices, if you will, and they're trying to find. You know, a daily bed or some type of placement, but there's, and there's rejection sometimes. This gives back to that issue where this is a, a crisis, a place basically to do the intake. Much like JIAC. JIAC is a secure facility. This is basically replace maybe part of the function that happens at JIAC currently. But Representative Owens, Senator Alex Owens is, is very in tune with this. He understands it extremely well. And he said, he was surprised actually that this doesn't currently exist in Sedgwick County. This is almost like, almost like this is, and here's my low hanging fruit. We got, we really need to do this. And Amber Hope was like, Amber Hope was like, absolutely. So I know, I don't understand this to the same degree that he does, not at all, but I do think this is really important. It needs to stay on the platform.
And I would just add that this is one where I think. Whether it's commissioners or, or staff weighing in on this is going to be incredibly important because we are going to face pushback. On strengthening some of these things to provide law enforcement judges and our child welfare providers with additional tools. To manage these very, very difficult and dangerous youth. And when that pushback comes, we, we will really need to lean on voices outside of just ours to speak up. And so our legislators will have the confidence to continue to move forward and creating additional tools. That don't exist right now because of policy changes that were made a few years ago.
Hundred percent agree. Go ahead, Jason.
Well, she hit the nail on the head at the very end. I mean, we're talking about an appropriations matter right now because we're in the budget section. You can get funding for secure PRTF. That's when we have the problem. You know, you're going to have to change policy.
Right.
So that places like Ember Hope can actually put those kids in. Because right now you have policy that says they can't.
So can we, could you do us a favor? I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's Steve or Tim or Rusty or. Can somebody draft a memo so that we fully understand what is Ember Hope doing? What's a juvenile crisis intervention bed? What is the difference and what are we asking for? So that we fully know specifically what are we asking for and what do we need? We might need both things, but we need to. We need to understand the difference between the two. That way we can advocate appropriately because this is, it's complex. It's really complex.
We've got some basic work on that. I'll get with Tim and. Our management analysts and Steve.
That'd be helpful. It'd be really helpful. And then we'll, when we do this again, we'll come back to this and say, this is what we need. That's good. Thank you for the help on that. Thank you for your work with Ember Hope.
Okay. We're rounding out appropriations with the last one, which is really right now, just a placeholder. Under transportation, that's to support additional funding into KDOT and I'm going to refer to Commissioner Meisner or Commissioner Dennis on this one.
Yeah, I think we, we kind of put that in there. I, I don't know if I could lean on you guys. Does KDOT have their own agenda for funding or do they, do they need us to have a statement that we support the next ICA plan or?
I mean, I think that probably an appropriate opportunity there, we're going now into the, the local concept cycle. Local consult cycle again. And so from my perspective for Sedgwick County, we want to continue to support. Transportation projects that impact the region. And so something to that effect probably makes sense. The days of sweeping their money, at least for now, have stopped. So we don't think there's issues there, but we do want to make sure that those dollars are coming back into the Sedgwick County region and supporting. Our road construction so that we can continue to move trucks through here.
So. I guess I could catch up with the KDOT management and ask if it's helpful if we give a supporting statement. Or if they would say, we just.
Well, I actually think it's important that we have something that prioritizes. Investments in the Sedgwick County South Central Region that KDOT needs to see that. They need to see from all of you that you're keeping an eye on where those dollars are going. And that they know it's a priority that investments are made here.
This came, came out of the Transportation Coalition meeting that we had not too long ago. Uh, we're, we're looking at the projects that we have. And we see a lot of projects happening up in, in northeast part of the, of the state. And we want to make sure that we get our share of the pot back here for critical projects that we're pacing. With the Transportation Coalition. So that, that's kind of where it came from. Let's, let's just reword that.
So the chamber has something that, that basically says ongoing support for the ICA transportation. Program with proportional. Allocations of dollars, something to that extent. So that's the chamber saying, hey, we support ICA. Don't sweep the money. But give us our fair share based on our population.
And Transportation Coalition is held over Chamber. So we're all speaking the same thing.
That's helpful. Okay. All right. Uh, our presser had to run, but I think we already covered and we're pretty clear on what we need to do here. So, okay, good.
So moving into policy, first item, Appraiser Office, rename the county appraiser to state appraiser.
What do you think? That was, I was joking on that question.
I love this so much. It's, I, I, every time I bring this up to anybody. AC today, for example, there is a lot of support for this. So all we're talking about is changing the name. Pretty simple. It's a Kansas State Appraiser for Sedgwick County. Or a, any other county for that matter. So.
I don't know how you don't support something when Commissioner says he loves it so much. But I, I, I'll joke inside. I get the point. And it's a good point to be made, quite frankly.
So it'd be a, change the, rename the county appraiser to the state appraiser on behalf of X county.
Kansas State Appraiser for Sedgwick County.
And there may not be appraiser for every county. I don't know how that works, but if there's a region or a, a description of the, of their. Of their jurisdiction, so to speak, you know, give the appropriate name, but state appraiser for, and how have you described that with the next words there?
Okay.
Okay. Corrections is the next one. Amend Senate Bill 228 to add juvenile detention facilities. Uh, Senate Bill 228 directs KDOTs to reimburse counties for costs related to holding a person in custody while awaiting examination, evaluation. Or treatment to restore competency to speed trial.
Jason, Jessica, do you need any detail from, from Steve on that? Okay. Okay, very good, very.
You started drafting that bill language or is, does that language interest? Okay.
We have, yeah, we have.
Is that going through your association or are you wanting us to bring that forth?
Yeah, that was coming from the, from the association.
Association.
So they're not, they're not, they're. The number of kids who go through this process are way smaller than those in the jail. But it's, when we ran the numbers, I think it was about a hundred thousand dollars over a couple of years period of time. So it's, it's significant in that it may push them to find places for these to go. And, and kids can't be tested for competency in the community like, like adults can. So there's, there's several layers to this. So there's. Are sticking. Association support would be helpful, though. They'll support it. There, it's just, there's only. Five detention centers and.
So if this remains on the agenda, it will be important for us that we're working together on that language so we can move through. The bill process because it sounds like something that is going to be Sedgwick County driven. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I think. More to the point, if, if this is on the agenda, this isn't an appropriations item. This is legislation. It needs to be written. It needs to be given to a reviser and it needs to get introduced. And that process for writing and getting it to the reviser needs to be happening right now.
There's a, there's a first draft that have gone to the county councilor. And so. Turns up in 24.
Again, just a reminder, this will be.
Quick session.
This is going to be a quick session.
Good reminder.
Okay, I'm going to put Commissioner Howell on the spot. Commissioner, did you have anything you wanted to add under corrections based on the table discussion we've had last?
Yeah, I just let everyone know, we're going to, we are going to meet again here in January as, as requested by, again, Representative Owens. Senator elect Owens. And you do some follow-up. Again, Nathaniel did a great job. He was at that meeting. I'm sure he has done some feedback. We have. Michelle with staff is still, I think, transcribing some of the notes from that meeting. Um, I think we're probably going to probably have a couple of bills. It's on the list right now. But on this policy list, I'd like to add the words again. Sounds like a repeat from before. We made some great progress last year. Thank you for your work, both of you. But Senate Bill 367 still needs some help. And so we had a roundtable. Judges and DA and law enforcement and corrections and, and foster care all spoke. And there's a few things, I'd say three or four things that fall into either the corrections camp or the foster care camp. That probably needs to be a couple of different bills. And so I, I, I think that right now my hope is to get that. Uh, cleaned up and ask for a legislator to help do some revisit, some, uh, bill drafting to have, hopefully have something to look at in January.
Yeah, I, I see where you're going. So, you know, if we can get language, then we can go to somebody like Senator elect Owens and say, will you sponsor this? That allows us to then go work with the revisers to get a bill drafted and put in the hopper.
He, he's been really great and I think he understands and really seems to support really the entire discussion. So he'd probably be the right person to do that. We did, I think, have six or seven legislators in attendance. And so. I, I believe there is support both on, again, on Senate and House side, uh, based on that meeting. I, I think it's bipartisan and I think we're going to see easily probably two bills come out of that meeting. And hopefully we'll have a bill draft in January that, uh, he'll be able to present back to us. And again, working with you as well. So me not realize this is your thing, but.
Well, we'll, let's reach out.
All right, thank you. All right, thanks.
Okay. Next two items for the election office, modify statute for any election precinct separated from other precincts by any public right of way. County or township roads or similar geographical divisions may be combined with an adjacent precinct. As long as the political districts are the same for each of the combined districts. Second one then is modify statute for precinct person. Election results data shall not be considered final or official until county canvassing is complete. Election commissioner or county clerk of the county shall be afforded up to three business days to transmit the official. Results for precinct elections to the office of the Kansas Secretary of State.
So our election commissioner is here. I'm assuming this came from her.
No, me.
Oh. Have you talked?
Well, actually the second one is from her, but I understand it.
Is she supportive of the first one? Do you know?
Yeah, it's a, it's a challenge. There seems to be no easy way for her to solve this problem. There is a, a desire to, uh. To protect the privacy of small precincts that have very low voter, voter turnout. So. Uh, if there's less than 20 people who voted in a precinct currently, the, the. The internal policy, I don't think it's the state's state law because other counties don't do it and we never did this until 2022. So to go that, through that, this is a new thing. I can go back to previous elections. You can find small precincts that had election results posted, but now if you wanted to see, it was only. Because I have access to the election registration data. If only three people voted and they all voted the same way.
Then you know everybody voted for.
You know, as we can see, there's three people voted for X candidate.
Yeah.
Then you can probably know how they voted. So there's a privacy concern, but let me point out here, there was 82 precincts. Eighty-two precincts where the data, voter data in the last, not 2024, but the 2023, I think the 23 or 22. I think it might have been 2022 election cycle. Just for example, 82 precincts had a hundred percent of their voter data redacted. From our results, 82 precincts. That's almost 5,000 votes redacted out of the totals. So you, you just have to trust. These results, then it all adds up and you're trusting someone else to make the analysis. I don't trust. I don't trust, no offense to anybody. I, I want to be able to do my own analysis. I want to see where the votes came from. It needs to make sense to everybody. So if, talking about election integrity and security, if the people out there understood what I just said, they're going to become, they're going to come unglued. This has got to be solved. And the one, one reason these small precincts exist is because we have a city incorporation here, a county road and the cities across the street, which happens all the time. They have to be different precincts. So that's the first problem. I, I, my, my argument is if the, if the people on both sides of the road have the same decisions on their ballot, find a way to, to legislatively allow them to be merged. You can say they're, they're one precinct, although there's a a line through the middle of it, uh, they're, they're essentially have the same ballot. So let them be the data be merged together.
Yeah, I, I understand. Do you know if our election commissioners talked to the secretary?
I do not know.
Why don't we send over a message to her and see where she's at on this and.
It just be.
A hundred percent agree.
Okay, um, Chairman, I just want to be um.
We have a noon stop, yeah.
Yeah. So tell me, do you want, is there anything that you want me to pick out of this that we want to have a discussion on? I know Dr. Stedman is on Zoom. We've got something for Regional Forensic Science Center. Um, and then of course we have a couple of finance um, uh, points on here. So I just want to, I want to, you know, kind of be.
Yeah.
Out of time and, and maybe some issues that we may want to discuss. So we can get done by.
I, I, I think I'm good on the finance and economic development. Obviously commissioners let us know if you see something on there that you want to have further discussions or. The last point on the economic development, the RHID statutes for county policy impacts, I think we need to give you some clear. Maybe Brent or Lindsay might be able to give us some clear guidance of what we're looking for on RHID. This was a big topic here about eight, nine months ago. So we're going to ask for some more guidance on our flexibility, correct?
One day I'll learn how to work it. We've gotten some good national state and, and uh, local level uh, information on housing, what's happening in the county and so forth. I think Tom is going to plan to set that up for a staff meeting. So you can hear that. We'll get some recommendations at that point.
So we'll circle back with some specifics.
Well, and I kind of thought that, that we did an extensive amount of making our own county policy, which I think we're all happy with and the developers are happy with. So if we elevate this to the state level, are they going to come in and undo what we've already done locally? I, I just.
I think that the, the data supports the policy decision that you made.
Okay, all right. So we may, we may not, we may not come beyond that, but we need some, we'll get some more clarity on what it is. Right, okay.
I would agree.
Can you provide some more clarity on amend Senate Bill 13 to allow for adjustments to revenue neutral? I thought they had made some changes. So curious what we need there.
So I, I'm not aware of any changes they've actually made other than the revenue neutral rate reimbursement, that mailer reimbursement.
Okay.
But there are a couple of changes that we've discussed locally. So for example, we have the WSU mill levy rate that we, by state law, it says it's 1.5 mils. So whatever assessed value is, whatever that growth is, it doesn't matter. Um, if we want to go in and collectively have a flat abalorm tax levy with the prior years, we would have to actually go in and reduce the rest of the county budget by the amount that WSU's assessed value goes up. So we need an exemption for state set mill levy rates. Um, we also, I think, would appreciate some exception and Commissioner Howell can speak to this with any detail. Um, you know, under the old truth and taxation, and even then the property tax led, there were some exceptions for CPI or for, you know, property tax that came off of being abated and came on to the tax roll. And so we would like to have some exceptions made for that so that when those things happen, which they're supposed to do, the county itself is not penalized for accepting that growth.
Okay.
So those kinds of things.
Do you have language?
We can certainly put it together.
That would be super helpful.
Yes. And would you like it in a bill format or just like a description of what we're trying to achieve or both?
Um, yeah, if you can do it in a bill format, we still need to put that in front of a reviser, but that, that's helpful.
Yeah, good. Okay.
I think that's been part of the problem is no one's ever really brought forth language. We just talk conceptually. So if you can do that work, it.
There are a few things on planning. One of them is we would love to have some flexibility on cell phone tower zoning. Um, this comes up a lot around here. And we would love our capacity to actually consider some different things in cell phone towers. So that's on there. I think that's self explanatory. Um, short-term rentals, these are businesses. You want to opine on the uh, cell phone towers?
Nope.
That's the um, uh, property tax guidance on short-term rentals, we have significant number of them in Sedgwick County now um, in the cities, but also an incorporated um, and tactic commercial rate instead of a residential rate. Um, so those are conversations that we, if you have any questions on those, we would like to hear them or if you need any more clarity on them.
So I mean, that's, the county is going, that's, that would be a tax increase.
Yeah, we have, our hotels are being taxed at a commercial rate, but uh, people like me that own properties are using my rentals as businesses, but being taxed at residential rates. Um, uh.
On your residential?
Yeah, these are, these are homes. We're using a short-term rentals, but it's 11.5 assessment rate.
Like the VRBOs, whatever.
Yeah, Airbnb, things of that sort. So, and we have 650 of them now in the city of Wichita.
You're saying they're being taxed at a lower rate?
Assessment rate is uh, is a residential 11.5 instead of the 25% commercial rate. But they're operating these places as businesses. Um, and our hotels are kind of asking why the.
Are they, is it less than a residential rental? So if you own a home and you rent it, short-term, that's a commercial enterprise. Are, are the Airbnb's paying less than the, then if, if Commissioner Howell owns a house at 357 West Main Street and he rents it to me, is that, does that increase the property tax rate currently?
No.
Okay. So they're not paid, they're not paying less than a normal rent.
Correct.
Okay, no, I misunderstood.
Yeah, no, that, that, yeah, the, the conversation is around particularly short-term rentals, which is a big discussion here in the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County right now. They said, you know, is there an unfair competitive advantage? Um, and the hotel industry is being disrupted in, in a way that we're feeling some questions as to why there is a unfair competitive advantage. So we can vet that out and talk through that. So another, I, I kind of have an idea of where that's going with the legislature, um, based on on the tenor of the legislature right now in regards to that, but, but there is an unfair competitive advantage that's being created.
And another disparity is a hotel pays a, a bed tax, you know, a per room night tax, but.
Airbnb's do as well.
Do not.
Airbnb's do as well.
Yeah. Well, it's not being applied here in Wichita. There's some things that we're working through. So, but the, the capacity to do that is there, yeah. So we're, we'll work through that a little bit more and then.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to fly us through because I know we're at deadlines, so.
Yeah, it's, it determines whatever you want to pull out at either this point to.
Well, let's pause because we've had, Dr. Stedman's been incredibly patient on there. And so uh, forensic science center. Uh, once you walk through that one there and then we can finish up here.
So first one and I'll, I'll lean on that. Is Rusty, yeah, Rusty and Dr. Stedman are both here. So change to state law and or enactment of a state law that would enable county coroners to dispose the remains, generally uh, cremated remains of unclaimed individuals in a manner consistent with state laws that apply to monetary uh, service and services providers. And then second to that is change uh, to state law and our enactment of a state law that would enable county coroners to dispose of personal property of the deceased in a similar fashion to statutes that apply to sheriffs.
So we've, we've drafted some basic language as to what that might look like. And uh, one of the county counselors has looked at it. Dr. Stedman is still uh, vetting that and we'll talk to other coroners uh, across the state. This is really unique. Um, Sedgwick County, like adult community corrections, juvenile community, community corrections, our populations are larger than any other county. And in this instance, I think we have more unclaimed bodies than anybody else. So it's kind of unique to Sedgwick County to some degree. And uh, so we're just trying to, right now the law, the way that the statutes are written, um, it's described by the county counselor's office are kind of um, mute, there's no language in there that's specific. Says you can cremate a body, but it doesn't give any direction on how you can dispose of. And the practice has been that we simply retain those for eternity in the custody of the county. Um, and so we're just trying to remedy some language in the statute that would give specific abilities to the coroner to address those issues that are consistent with other state laws that currently exist. So. But again, we need to vet that through some other corners to make sure that there's no uh, objections from them. And we may provide you with some language to see what you think, if anybody's gonna if any legislators would care to even consider something like this.
No, I think that's pretty straightforward. I think we give the language and.
We'll give it to him. It's, it's becoming an issue here significantly. So we've, we've got to deal with it.
The deceased remains you are currently.
Oh yeah, we've got numbers.
Dr. Stedman, you're on and you're welcome to jump in any point to add some color or clarity to this.
I was just here, Dr. Stedman from the Regional Forensic Science Center, and I'm just here in case there were questions about the process.
Okay, thank you.
Probably we have about somewhere around 450 cremains dating back to 2012, give or take. And there's personal property with those that is the same situation where there's no direct statutory language that provides for us to do anything with that. And if next of kin can't be found, or if they've been found, but declined any responsibility, then we're trying to remedy.
So we'll get you some bill language and see if we can clean it up. Hey, thank you, Dr. Stedman. It's helpful. We'll, we'll keep working on it. Um, okay, anything else on here? The one on the sheriff is something that's talked about frequently. I don't know if that's needs any more clarity there. You know the situation there, Ken? Um, and then we're going to try to remove something that Commissioner Howell did when he was in the legislature, property tax related damage structures. The irony is that today.
Axe that thing, it's a mess. The, the, the property tax abatement for a property is substantially destroyed. That's turned out to be a disaster. We need to get rid of that law. So.
Who wrote that?
Some, some moron wrote that law. Oh, I'm sorry, it was me. I wrote that law. It's, it's the worst idea. Just, we need to, it is bad experiment. It failed. It's time to get rid of it and I would advocate strongly to get rid of that law.
Well, let's talk more, so not now, because we're.
Okay.
But let's just talk so we understand the examples of the problems.
As we.
Want to talk later or talk?
Yeah, we'll just talk, okay.
And if you could maybe do it in an email and if you wouldn't mind CC and.
That away. I'll send you, I'll send you something. I asked a white, we actually have a deal coming up, I think tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
It's on the agenda tomorrow for this exact same thing. I'll probably opine tomorrow as to how bad this law is, so.
Very good. Jason, Jessica, Nathaniel, I think he's still running around. Thank you for the work you guys do. It's incredible. We've had a lot of success and you guys really are a lot to, we credit a lot to the success of the, your guys, what you do. How well you do it. So, Tonya, anything else?
Nope. Um, I think we'll just work on, you know, what we're provided today for feedback and we'll.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate everybody. All right, see you tomorrow morning.